Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning board of appeals meeting for February 19th, 2025. First, I will probably be coughing and hacking. I am not contagious. I just have whatever, so I apologize in advance. Second, I would like to acknowledge and embarrass my friend Catherine Clark, who is right next to me, to my right. She has been on the board for seventeen, no?
Eighteen.
Eighteen or something like that, and this is going to be her last board meeting. Catherine is, well, she's been a wonderful board member. She's calm. She's smart. She's composed. She's thoughtful. She's quiet, but she's not weak. And she's just a wonderful board member, hardworking, and we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you. She has a great sense of humor, very kind of dry sense of humor. We have a lot of fun, and hopefully we, well, you're off the board, but you're not just going to leave the area, so we'll merge into each other and everything else. But she's done a great job, and, you know, there's a lot of people who do a lot of service for this town and other municipalities, and we're rarely acknowledged. So I just wanted, for the record, acknowledge the great job you've done over these eight years, and you're greatly, greatly missed.
Thank you, Rob.
So we do have a quorum, which is good. It was nice. And did everybody get a chance to take a look at the minutes for the last meeting? We had meeting minutes for January 15th. They look fine to me, but I hear from my board members, do you see any corrections that need to be made or have any concerns or anything like that? No? Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the meetings to a meeting minutes.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have three applications on. As far as the new applications go, it's a fairly informal process. All we want you to do is to come on up. We have the mic there. We have the camera over there. We have the application, and if you could just briefly explain to us what the nature of your, you know, if it's an interpretation, or if you want a variance, or whatever it is, what you want, and assuming we have enough information, we'll accept the application and set up for public hearing. So Kyle, take it away.
Thank you very much, Ken. I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kyle Barnett. I'm with the law firm of Vandewater and Vandewater. This is the first time, I think, I've had the privilege before this board. As Scott knows, I represent a lot of municipalities throughout the Dutchess-Sulster area, and especially ZBAs. I have a great deal of respect for all of you there. So thank you so much for your service. I appreciate that and for your time this evening. I represent Henry and Justin Tobin. The purpose of this application is actually an appeal from a determination of your zoning enforcement officer that was issued back in November. Anyway, the Tobins own a residential property in the Naga district. They bought the property back in 2022. It is their primary residence. They live there full-time. They moved to the area from Green County. Since they bought the property, they've been doing some work on the property renovations and so forth. They're now using that, as I said, as their primary residence. They have two small children that they're raising there. And in the process of the renovations and following the purchase, they made a determination that they'd actually start to use some of the property for agricultural purposes. They actually own two lots. One is 15 acres, and I believe the other one is around nine, if I have that correct, and they're contiguous. So there's quite a bit of property there for which they can put to an ag use. As I mentioned, they are in an agricultural district. So in the course of doing so, they purchased quite a bit of agricultural equipment and some supplies for that purpose. They are now in the process of speaking with and engaging a national farmer to do the land lease, to cultivate the land for both corn and hay, and we're working on those details as we speak. The issue, the central issue, I'll get to the point because we did submit, provide a submission that goes into this a bit more detail, and I know there are other matters on. The issue is predominantly this: There was a violation that was issued because of an agricultural storage shed that was put up on the property that's intended to house the agricultural equipment. The violation, however, refers to the matter as a, refers to the structure as a portable, portable temporary garage, private garage. But that therein lies the problem for two central reasons, at least two central reasons. One, the structure's not a garage. Your code actually provides a definition for what a garage is, and you'll be able to find that in 12536. And in particular, that's where also it's referenced as to what a temporary garage is. And a garage requires that the building is used for the storage of vehicles, not maybe used, not should be used, not can be used, is being used for the storage of vehicles. And that's one of the central components of complying with the definition of garage. And the second thing is that the garage can't, the garage can't be used for any type of commercial or activity, obviously any activity that would be distinct from residential type of use. So in this situation, for those two various reasons, number one, this structure is not being used as a garage. It's being used for the storage of agricultural equipment. There are no vehicles, as vehicles are defined in the vehicle and traffic law. There's, thank you, there's actually one of the pictures that we submitted. You can see there's a tractor in there. It's nowhere near, it's not near the residence itself, so it wouldn't make sense to try to use it for vehicles because of the way where it's located. In fact, it's located and situated in a place to make access to the agricultural equipment convenient for the subsequent ag use that's going to be used on the property. And so for the fact that it doesn't, it's not intended for the use of vehicles or housing vehicles, and two, because it's being used for agricultural purposes, it's obviously being used for commercial use. So for both those reasons, it can't possibly satisfy the definition of what would be considered a private garage. If it's not a private garage, it obviously isn't a temporary private garage.
You mentioned something about it's not near the principal residence. I think there's something that you supplied to us and chose, I think, is the X where the spy is?
Yes. Oh, thank you. Wow.
Yeah, we got everything.
Yeah. Yeah. We're for this. We're for that. Yeah, so thank you so much. This is useful. So there, so you can see there's the residence, and that's where the, that's where the agricultural storage shed is located. So obviously, it's not, you know, not anywhere near the residence, nor wouldn't make any practice to use the storage of something that's going to be used for the agricultural activity.
What's the left side, what's that?
This area that's going to be the?
So, yeah, that's one of the areas that we plan to farm. That's not, that's not the primary area. So I'm not quite sure when this was submitted, but there are other, so that's just one of the lots. The other lot is just the left there.
It's right here.
So maybe there's a version that's.
Yeah, there's another, there's.
But there's additional acreage that could be, that's just one of the.
Well, it's, yes, the other lot is over here, and it's completely vacant lot, so that lot is also going to be available for agricultural use.
Where's your, where's the house?
Right there.
Okay. And then where's the closest neighbor? The closest neighbor, I believe, with you, all the way over.
Actually, I have a.
And just for the record, I believe you're Mr. Tobin?
I'm Mr. Tobin.
Okay. Okay, so just, we need to get it for the record.
Sure.
Is it accurate what you just said?
Well, we're just.
I'm in your neighborhood.
Right. What we're doing right now is we're simply looking at the, at the application. If we think there's enough for the application, we set it up for a public hearing. That is where you get an opportunity to ask whatever questions you want to make or you want to ask, make any statements you want to make, present whatever evidence you want to make, either for or against. So, if, by the way, for the record, what is your name?
My name's Lynn Mylett.
Okay. So that, the opportunity to discuss this is at the next meeting. Not now, but I appreciate you being here and look forward to your comments.
So you can see here from looking at, thank you, you can see here from looking at the map, there's, there's a neighbor here. And we, another neighbor over here, and then.
While we're out of Islam, where are you on this?
I'm just to the right of that yellow, green, and property, and if you.
Is that where we're pointing right now? Is that you?
No. A little further up and to the right, but if you would highlight where the structure is in that picture, it's going to show you that it's very near my property and it has become the main feature that I see.
And we, and we will get to that, and one thing, as Brian mentioned, we'll get to that at the next meeting, and then after that, we do a site inspection. We actually go out. So we will look and see what there is to be seen, not that we don't take everybody's word.
It's hard to resist it here.
No, no, not that we don't take everybody's concerns very seriously, but we do go out because that's really the best way to see what's what. Okay?
So, so then, just, I think, from looking at it here, where that highlighted portion is, is where the agricultural storage shed is located, right around there. So, so the, as I indicated, the, just previously, why it doesn't fall within the definition or the code's definition of garage, for the two reasons at least that I mentioned. One, it doesn't satisfy the use, and two, it's used, it'll be, the use is intended for agriculture. And that brings me to the second point. The second point is this, as the board is undoubtedly aware, agriculture is permitted as a right on this property. And so in the town, because the board is also aware, the town has an agricultural right to farm law, and as part of that, there's also certain exemptions at the zoning as it pertains to agricultural structures. So pursuant to the town's right to farm law under the, and also under ag markets, the Tobins have a right to use the subject property in agriculture, and of course, as part of that, certainly install structures to assist in them.
Is this an ag district?
It is.
Yep.
All right, Bob, we'll get your, get your chance, and we will look into it, and it is what it is.
The, I can tell you right now, it's in, it's in the RC5, and if you look in your code, agricultural is a permitted use.
I think the question is a state, a state.
Oh, state, I'm sorry. Is it in state ag district? No, I don't believe it is. I apologize for that.
And that's my question. No, your question was not, it's.
I misunderstood.
Crisp as a tritium.
No, no, my fault. And it's, and, but ag, I believe, and, correct me if I'm wrong.
It's in the RC5.
It's in an RC5, and ag is a permitted use as a right. So the Tobins are perfectly permitted to use the property in agriculture, and are perfectly permitted to have structures to assist in the use of agriculture. Any prohibition to them being permitted to use structures for the purposes of agriculture would obviously be a violation of the agricultural right to farm law. So for that second reason, the structure that is on the property would be permitted use. And subsequently, you know, as, as the, as the farm develops, it's the expectation that a more, you know, that the other structures are at least a farm and also assist within their use as an ag use on the property, but.
A question, I'm sorry, Catherine. No. Question, a comment, any? I don't think anybody's saying they can't farm necessarily, but that is a need, that there needs to be structure. In terms of the structure, the John Deere that was, that's in there, when was the picture taken? Do you guys have any recollection? Was it recently? Has it been a while? Do you remember?
That, that specific picture?
Yeah. Picture that's the shelter.
Taken.
So, yeah, I was thinking a few months ago for the purpose of this application. And I, and I, I would just suggest that if the right to farm law, not also pursuant to your, your code, would, would allow structures such as barns and other structures to house agricultural equipment.
I'm not suggesting that it doesn't. I just say that they can still farm without having that. I'm not saying that, you know, it's their property, they can do what they want, assuming that's something with laws and regulations, but somebody can still rent the land out and farm and do whatever they want, regardless of the structures there.
Right. They absolutely could, or they can, or, you know, if they don't want to house their equipment, a farmer can leave the equipment out in the rain. That's absolutely correct.
But would a farmer have to get some form of permission or permit or something to show what the structure might look like and where it might be on the property?
No, sir. No, there are certain, only, only if the structure meets certain size, exceeds a certain size, which is much larger than this structure, would they then have to go forward to get a special use permit or a site plan. But, but a structure of this size does not require that, under your code.
You can put up as many as you like.
Certainly. If they're, if they're used in agriculture, you can put up, you can put up, you know, provided you meet setback requirements, provided that you meet density requirements. Some towns have certain density requirements in terms of how much square footage can cover a particular, particular lot. So there's other things that might prohibit someone from being able to develop an entire piece of property under any circumstances. Absent those requirements, yes, you can put up a barn, a stable. I bet you that I'm familiar with the, actually, I'm familiar with this area, and I'm sure we can point to a lot of ag properties that have numerous agricultural buildings on it.
Can you go back to the, the last illustration that showed the plot of land? Yeah. Which is the other piece of property that belongs to Tobin?
It's that, see where it says the 12, 12825, sir.
Okay. Which also has a, looks like it has a long slender piece that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fly line.
Okay.
It's a total acreage. I'm sorry.
And, Kim, I think the question is for you. Is there any acreage limitation on what can fall in your agricultural use?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You know, I have to look a little bit closer into the zoning law. I wasn't able to go through the farm definition for this meeting, but that's going to be on my.
If I may jump on that to answer your question, Ms. Clark? There isn't. There's no minimum acreage requirement in the town code for farming operations. The farming operation is defined in the town code, and you can have two acre farm, you can have 100 acre farm. There's no, there's no limitation. There is, however, limitation, there is, however, size restrictions as it pertain to getting an ag exemption or something like that, which is not in any way relevant to the proceedings before you. But if you wanted an ag exemption, you could, you can farm, you can farm less than seven acres, you just have to meet a certain income threshold if it's less than seven. If it's over seven, then the income threshold is lower, but that doesn't apply to, to, you know, what constitutes farming operation in your code.
I think, I think that's where I had heard the acreage.
Yes, ma'am.
Just another quick question. Going back, Kim, can you go back to the?
The picture?
The picture, yes, it says, no, no, keep going. No, the one where it shows where the structure is and where, okay, that right there. There's some distance away, the structure and where one of the proposed areas of farming is, and the other piece of property is over to the left, so to speak. Can it be put over there, so Islam doesn't have to see it?
Well, I think part of the issue is, it's a good question, and one could certainly ask.
I mean, I don't know what the topography is.
Yeah, there's some topography issues as well, and also, this was done quite a while ago. It's my understanding, also, after conversations with the, the person, I think the Tobins are willing to engage, they're looking to actually utilize this area back here as well.
Which, I guess, it's more on the top, it's more on the top right.
Yeah.
Would you be closer to the other property?
No.
No, it's actually closer to the.
It would be a left.
Okay.
It's right in here.
Do you happen to know, I don't know if your acreage is your total acreage.
Yeah, 24.
24.
Combined, Bob, it is 25 and a half.
Have you explored temporary and or permanent structures per your total acreage allowance or what you're zoned for?
So you're asking, like, what the, what the lot coverage, is that the, is that the question?
I'm trying to ask that. I'm sure I'm doing a good job.
No, that's, no, that's quite right. Listen, I've been doing this a long time, and I'm not sure I'm asking. So, yeah, in terms of, there is, there's, there are, it's very common that towns have lot coverage restrictions. I'm not sure what it is. Candidly, I don't know what it is in the town of Rhinebeck. I'd be very surprised if we're anywhere close, given the size of this lot. It's usually, it, it usually, what you'll see in most town codes is it's like 25% or something like that.
Yeah, there's a formula that we have.
Yeah, there is.
It's supportive.
It's quite a bit.
It doesn't matter, the gentleman is saying is, it doesn't matter if it's agricultural. You could, you could put as many buildings on it as you want.
Well, well, no, no, with, with, I'm sorry, let me, I, thanks, I, with, as long as you don't, you're still going to have to comply with lot, you still might have to comply with lot coverage for other plants. So even if it's ag, you can't, even if this thing is ag, with ag, the, there are, there are restrictions to how much a town can zone agricultural activity. So.
It can be unreasonably restricted.
Thank you.
If it's under ag markets.
Correct.
State law can be unreasonably restricted, your right to farm law.
That's correct, Kim. There can, but there can be restrictions.
Yes.
And so, and so lot coverage can, can be a restriction, but usually, your, a lot coverage restriction is, I mean, usually, it restricts, like, something like around 20, more than 25 or 30% of the lot. It's not like 10% or anything. So, and those restrictions can apply to agricultural uses. They can. So I hope that clarified.
No, you, that.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
And I, forgive me, I don't want to dominate this meeting, but I mean, I went through this with our property.
Brian, would you want to just speak, just because there's.
I'm sorry.
We're just.
I went through this with our property, and we had to go through the planning board, and then we have 122 acres, and so there's a formula, and you have to go through that process. I'm just, it takes time, but then you can prove. I'm just wondering why this is in front of the ZBA and why you haven't gone through the planning board.
The reason, the reason for that is, is because this is actually, what we're doing here is seeking an interpretation, we're appealing a violation that was issued. Your ZEO called that a, a garage.
Yeah. Sorry about that. I shouldn't.
No, that's okay, sir. And so, Brian, so we're forced, I mean, both, you know, but for that, the only, the only remedy available is to go to the ZBA. In terms of, just, and as a second, a separate thing, just to digress, and I'm sorry, I, stop it. I don't talk about this stuff. So, as, as a second thing, there are ag uses where you might have to go to the planning board, but it, but they usually, there are, and in your code and in every code, there are very specific times when that's necessary. Even if, even if all things being equally were here, this would not be one of those requirements to go to the planning board for site plan approval and something like this. It just doesn't meet the size requirements and the, and the other requirements that we're going to have. But here, we're here simply because it's an appeal to the.
And I think one of the main comments from reading the notice violation is the fact, I think it said it was a temporary portable garage. I think that was one of the statements that Brian Tam made in the notice violation. So I think it's the type of structure that Brian is arguing in his notice violation that it doesn't meet an ag use.
Forgive me, is RC5, is that residential ag, or is it, what's the C?
The country, it's rural country.
Okay, so it's not ag.
Well, I think what Mr. Barnett, sorry, I think, was saying was that if there's ag uses permitted in the RC5 district, it's residential.
It's not an ag district, per se.
It's not an ag district, and it's not a state ag district, but there are ag uses that are permitted in the RC5.
Correct.
And, yeah, and it's just, and it's, 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 and this is what's critically important, it's the prohibition that I think was issued pertains exclusively to the type of use of the structure. It's got to be used to garage vehicles, that not maybe, not should, not can be, because obviously that can be anything in the world. And it's not, and so that's the problem. And the second issue, it's a twofer. There's that, and then the second one is because it's used in ag, it's exempt from, it would be otherwise theoretically exempt from the zoning regulation.
And just for the board, I did pull up, I just wanted to pull up what, how farm was defined in Rhinebeck. Again, I'll look a little bit further into this following this meeting, but I don't see any particular acreage attached to it, at least in terms of the definition in Rhinebeck. But I'll just, just so you can think about it, a farm is land and on-farm buildings, equipment, and practices which contribute to the production, preparation, and marketing of crops, livestock, and livestock products as a commercial enterprise. It excludes riding academies, dog kennels, and raising of fur-bearing animals. Farm operation is land and on-farm buildings, equipment, manure processing, and handling facilities, and practices which contribute to the production, preparation, and marketing of crops, livestock, and livestock products as a commercial enterprise, including horse boarding operations, timber operations, compost, mulch, and other biomass crops and commercial equine operations, each defined under New York Ag and Markets Section 301. It may consist of parcels old or rented, which are maybe contiguous. That's just the definition. I haven't gone into further detail in the zoning law, but just because that question was raised, if there was a particular acreage, I don't see anything at this moment.
Has farming ever been conducted under this property?
That's an excellent question, yes. In fact, it's been, it was farmed by prior owners. It used to be an apple tree farm, so I think even the prior, the prior owners, maybe not the direct, but the prior owners, if I'm not mistaken, okay, I, that's right, was you, so, so yes, it was farmed, it was an apple tree farm and.
The prior owners, it's our understanding, had an ag exemption.
And they had an, yeah, they also had an ag exemption.
And, and just for perspective, our neighbors to the north and neighbors to the south, you shall be able to picture those are farms currently operating. All right. I think we have enough to consider the application, so I'm going to make a motion that we accept it as enough for public hearing. You have a second?
Mr. Tam took photographs. You don't look closely?
We look at everything, and, but this is, again, today, we're here only to see if the application is sufficient for us to continue forward to the public hearing, which will occur at the next meeting. And that's when we get to talk about this in detail, if anybody gets an opportunity to present whatever evidence they have, ask whatever questions they have, et cetera. And then again, after that, we go out for the site inspection, so they just, to see, do we have enough here to consider it? And I think we do. So, anyway, I made the motion that I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Vote? Okay. When is the next meeting?
March 19th.
Okay. Are you able to be here on March 19th?
I am able to be here on March 19th. And I thank you for pointing out earlier that my clients, Justin and Andrew Tobin, are here. I believe Andrea will be here at that meeting.
Let me just want to, let me just.
Mr. Tobin.
And since we've had a little bit of discourse with Islam, will you be available on March 19th?
Will you still explain?
I just want to make sure, because obviously.
Is that your public hearing?
It's a public hearing. Okay. Okay, so what happens in the public hearing is that all the neighbors will be advised about this. They will have the opportunity to come in here and ask whatever questions they want, or ask whatever questions they have, respectfully. And, and then we will, you know, see if we have enough information to close the public hearing, and if not, and we will do the site inspection later on after that.
True.
That's the process. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
So I'm sorry, a site inspection takes place after the public. That's the way I like to do it, and the reason for that is this: Public hearing. Many times, we have folks who want to come out and voice their opinion about this. I want to know what the neighbors are thinking before I go out and do the site inspection. Okay? It's just, it's helpful for me to know what their points of contention are when I go out to do the site inspection. Typically, we don't, not all of us go out, sometimes it's all of us, but we all go out and we take a look. Typically, we don't, not all of us go out. Sometimes it's all of us, but we, we all go out and we take a look.
Contention and support?
Contention and support. There is support sometimes. Welcome. Thank you.
Apologize, I'm leaving before the end of your meeting. As thrilling as I find these meetings.
Oh, it is. It is a thrilling...
Do you want me to video tape it for you?
Okay, actually, it is video taped, so you can watch it later on. I'll be posted. So, so we have some housekeeping things here. And our counsel has suggested, and I believe is directed at the scene, it's a Type 2 Action Seeker, 617.5C37, and interpretation of an existing code rule or regulation. Right? So I make a motion that we consider this to be a Type 2 action under that section. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Obviously, referrals. Who would like to be the lead person for this?
I will.
You will. You should. You guys should be prepared to be there. Okay, so Brian will do that. All right, good. Next is Christopher Travers. Is there a difference in here? Oh, of course there's something here for that.
Who is here for that?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm Warren Smith Architect, representing Christopher Travers. He's here with you tonight and he wants to talk with us. This is pertaining to 500 Route 308, which is a brick former stable and carriage house for the adjacent Skyler Mansion on Miller Road. But this was accessed off 308 for some years. It was a bed and breakfast, I think they called it the Stanford White Carriage House, because it contributed to the office of the Indian White. It's, it's a lovely house in and of itself and turned into a residence quite a while ago. And it has an attached, existing attached garage to it on the southern end. That is old and it's rather small, you know, the door and the maze are narrow and so forth. And as Chris and Elizabeth tried to decide what to do with it, they decided they wanted a artist studio for Elizabeth and they felt that actually that would work better as a studio, the existing attached garage. And they preferred to build a separate detached garage of their vehicles. So that's what the, that's, the plan will ultimately go forward, the planning board, because it's a, subject to site plan, well, certainly site plan approval, because it's adjacent to an historic property and it's also an historic property in the zone right. So for all those reasons, we have to go to the planning board. The zoning issue that was raised by the zoning administrator is that even when a garage is attached, it's still considered as a separate structure. So that's one accessory structure. And then there is an existing fence around a generator that was put in, I think, by previous owners. And it has lattice work over the top, which to me doesn't seem like a roof. But the zoning administrator determined that was a second roof structure. And so then, because we wanna build this detached garage, it would be a third roof structure and there's a limit to the amount of square footage of a roof structure, roof accessory structures of the property. And I think that's 1500 square feet in there. If we add up the existing attached garage, the lattice over the generator and the proposed garage, we would be over that. I think we're at 1908. So we need a 408 square foot variance for covered accessory structures of the property. So that, that's why we're before the zoning board. So again, this is a detached garage. We're putting it as far from the principal residence as we can without, yes, without... Oh, thank you. You keep forgetting you have this high-tech stuff. Yes, right. We're putting, this is a survey without the garage showroom, but there's another drawing that shows it. So we, we are setting it as far back up against setbacks as we can, side yard, rear setbacks, because for several reasons. We wanna obviously give the existing historic structure breathing room and let it continue to be the star of the show. And also, this is sort of the end of the driveway where there's like, there's a basketball hoop and so forth. And this is just kind of a logical place in the back of the property. Also, what doesn't show in this survey, but does show in the other drawings, is there's, there's like rock right here. So topographically, this is pretty much the only place we could put an attached accessory structure. So that's the plan. And again, we're not here for a setback variance. We're here simply because this is gonna put us over the maximum limit for roofed accessory structures on the property.
Where's the, is the generator like a storage area?
It is, it's right here.
The storage area?
Yes, it says storage area. Yeah, in fact, it's a storage area.
I'll just go through, just because you did provide some drawings.
Sure.
I think this is a survey.
Right, so this shows, I'm sorry, this is down too soon. This shows, well, this is your, that, that shows the location. Location of the proposed garage, right. Yeah, so this is the, this is the same drawing you saw with the driveway, parking area. This is the location proposed for this accessory garage. And you see, these are the setback lines. They're all labeled with dimension. This is the principal structure. This is the, says storage area, truly generator enclosure. There's a pool and a patio which don't come into the covered accessory structures. So this is the one that sends us over that limit.
And the garage is that little piece of the variant, the existing garage?
The existing garage is this piece, the attached brick, detached three-bay garage is there. This is gonna be a two-bay garage. And this is that rock, basically, of the front.
What's the square footage of the roof over the generator?
The generator is actually measured, it's 424 square feet.
How much is it?
424.
It's a big generator and it's also got the pool equipment.
Right. Can you take the roof off? Well, my, my question is this. I know this is like, I, this, you know where I'm coming from, this is just trying to get...
The attached garage.
The attached garage, I know.
Is how it's written, I mean, it literally says attached garage.
It's gotta be changed.
Yeah, well, it's really funny when you have a garage under a house, like a split level, because something like that's part of the structure.
Exactly. So, and it's not gonna be a garage. It's, it's gonna be a studio.
In this case, it's gonna be our studio.
But it's just...
Serious question.
Yeah.
Do you envision any more roofs after this?
I would refer to Chris Travers.
No, not at all. I'll come up to the line.
Yeah.
Come on up and, yeah, say your name and whatever you're on the...
I'm Chris Travers. I'm the owner of 50531. Very proud of this house, by the way. It's an amazing piece of architecture. The, no, we don't plan any other construction. We, in fact, we decided not to continue with an approved piece of construction for the house.
Previous owner, right.
Previous owner, we don't wanna touch it. So that's one of the reasons why we're trying to preserve the integrity of the architecture and the history of the product. I, I wanna make a comment also about the garage that exists, because it's not really a garage. The whole house effectively is, is an accessory to the mansion next door and it's a whole carriage house. And it's actually horse-based. So I don't know why it's been determined as a garage. You could put a car in there, but there's actually a showerhead for the horses in there still, which we also don't wanna touch in that garage. So it's actually an amazing piece of storage for horses and maybe small characters. But it's, you know, it's not great for cars.
Should people revisit it? I mean, we, we, I don't know, show the definitions for the garage. It doesn't sound like it should be what it's just been described.
It's highly possible that you could interpret it as a garage, so I'm not asking.
Okay, I know, but it's just, it did, it's a case of mine.
Yeah, it might be even like even how it's been assessed, perhaps.
There are carriage houses doors on the front, so I mean, somebody could look at it and say it's a garage.
So, just so I'm clear, is the reason you're over the square footage because the old carriage house garage is still gonna be calculated even though it's not going to be?
Yes, it's considered an accessory, roofed accessory structure.
Even when it becomes a different use and doesn't have these doors on it and...
By the way, we don't touch the doors. The doors are...
Oh, we don't still have the doors?
When was this house built?
18, I think, or 19.
Yeah, correct.
So was the garage in the 19th century?
Something like it, yes.
Carriage house.
It's a carriage house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The hayloft is in the middle still, you know, it's...
And all the horse stalls are all...
The more, the other question would be, you know, the shed for the generator. I mean, you know, it's a pergola, I think.
Is, is that big enough too? Because, you know, we...
Well, I think with the, if it's, if it's, the generators don't count as accessory structures with a less than 50 square feet.
Because we checked, the law was changed on that.
Right, the law was changed on that. And I guess, I haven't, I, I mean, I read Brian's determination letter. He didn't go into details about the roof pergola, so I guess that's what Warren is saying. Is that because there's a roof at this, you know, covering over the generators? Because the way it's, the way it's written is roofed accessory structure. But the, the size limit for generators is 50 square.
Right.
I mean, this may be the most expedient path we can go.
Right, that's what I'm thinking too, yeah.
We're here, we're here now. Might as well.
Do it.
Hopefully in the future, things will be changed. Anyway, okay.
You want to go through what they can?
Yeah, by the way, I have one, Warren, thank you for the renderings. You know, I'm a renderings guy and I love the renderings. They're great. The only thing I would like is the possibles renderings just to show how the structure was placed on the property.
Yeah, we'll do that for your...
But, but, you know, the renderings were lovely. Really nice.
Right, I think can I have those?
Yeah, I'm just going through them. If you have any, I mean, I think they're pretty self-explanatory.
Information, right.
Are you gonna put in kind of a vacuum and save the...
No, don't let me. The, the electricity for lights and doors.
There's no broken ice. Beautiful house.
And you said, I think that no trees are being cut?
Uh, no, that's correct. We're not, we, we staked it out. We may have to re-stake it after the onslaught of snow and ice. But, um, yeah, we're good around and we don't need this. I mean, it's possible that a root of a tree may be disheartened for long-term, but we don't have to...
And you obviously need to stay for, you go out.
Yeah, yeah, if they were damaged, help replace them.
You got it, sir.
Maybe a little plumbing.
Yeah, if you run out of it now, you'd need to ask them.
Right, right.
Well, we can do that. Three of us. Anyway, it's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing I would ask is the renderings, you know, source me the location, how it appears on the property and all that stuff. But subject to that, I would make an application, a motion that we accept the application. Do you have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can you be here on the 19th of March? Sure, great. So if you could just get those additional renderings in. Rachel, would you simply want the additional stuff in week or so before?
Week or so before.
Yeah. Week or so before.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll see you around the 19th.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Now, I, as far as the seeker goes, I just think, I think he's gonna probably take care of that.
Yes. Oh, are you gonna be at the next planning board meeting? It's gonna be on from March?
Yeah, March 3rd, I believe, yeah.
March 3rd? Okay, you'll, because I know that they'll, they'll probably do the seeker at that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, everybody's submitted a super form.
Okay, so we're gonna let them do that. And obviously, the, the planning board's gonna have it anyway, but that's the only thing. And... So you're taking care of... And I guess I'll go and take care of this one. Anything else?
I think that's it.
I think that's it, okay. All right, did we have one additional new application? And that is Mr. Staley.
Thank you.
Come on, Nick, and tell us what you did, what your application's about. We'll ask you some questions and...
Interesting General Philip Skyler property is two of the items here. I own 400 Route 308, which was the site of General Skyler's Chris Mill. I have a marvelous waterfall in the backyard. I moved into that house when I was nine years old and trapped in the stream for muskrats and before I went to school and bought a lot of trout and loved the property. And I immediately bought it from my father, who was retired and had moved his real estate business out there at his home. And I continue to operate there. So I'm asking for variance of zoning code 125-63E. Property is not owner occupied. Well, that's questionable, because I think I spend more time on that property than my house in the village. I literally work seven days a week, go in at 8:30, get done at 4:30. Obviously, I'm not there all the time, but I'm not there. My office manager's there. One of my salespeople is there. My maintenance guy could be there. And so I, COVID came along is really where this came from, because I do have an Airbnb in the village. I've been operating for several years. And of course, like all short-term rentals, my, that took a heat hit. And of course, I love the outdoors. It's why I take care of it with force. And I've been having an RV in my backyard for years. My motivation first was my grandson, who was in Connecticut, would come spend time with me and that's where he wanted to stay, behind the office. So I think about 2010 was when I got a little bit formal about it and put a dump station on my septic system there. At any rate, two years ago, I, I started operating the Airbnb and it's been very successful. It's inexpensive. It's an opportunity for people who can't pay for the beer boat to spend the weekend here or a week at 150, a weekend, 130 during the week. They can bring their dogs, their pets and enjoy this beautiful site that's in Rhinebeck. It literally is close to nobody. As you can see on the maps, it is inside the Cloverleaf of Route 308, which is the biggest complaint about it is there's, there's a lot of traffic noise. But it's a marvelous site. And so I'm asking that in consideration of the amount of time I spend on the property, that we may get a variance on 2563E. 2536UIA, which says you're able to store an RV on your property, but you're not able to use it. I don't understand why that's a problem. That needs to be regulated. You can only have one. You can have, I think, an all-terrain vehicle and use it. That's an RV. So I don't know why that was put in the code. I believe that Rhinebeck has a shortage of short-term accommodations. I know there is a big move to try and get a hotel on 9G to give us additional space. There's benefits to the county. My customers pays, as you know, a room tax. And of course, I have to employ people to do laundry, flip the thing, take care of the yard. And so, and I love, if you don't know it, talking about the history of Rhinebeck. After all, we do have post office box one and I'm six generations. My dad was the first chairman of the planning board here. He put the zoning law in Rhinebeck. Took him 11 years. Invaded people. It was okay to have the government tell you what you could or couldn't do with your property. And I have this plaque from Bill Allen, the supervisor, for that 11-year effort. So I'm asking for a variance on that code also. And I'd like to be able to continue to offer this accommodations to our visitors here. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
So I do have a question. It's kind of, so you, you have mentioned here that you're seeking a variance. Your application was for an appeal from the denial of your...
Right.
STR. So I guess in terms of procedure, there is a bit of a difference, you know, a different criteria that the board is looking for for a variance versus some appeal. So I just wanted to specify if you're looking for an interpretation to overturn the denial or to...
No, I, no, I... I need a variance.
Okay.
Unless you, unless someone decides that the fact that I'm there more than half the time while I'm away is owner occupied. So I don't care which way to go this long, you know. So I don't know who would make the interpretation of why...
The law talks about it must be owner's primary residence.
Right. So I'm asking for a variance.
So it's not a primary residence, obviously.
Not as...
We all know that.
So, so I need a variance for that one, Scott.
So I guess that would really be a use variance, because it's not, so there are variances for a physical dimension, like a setback or the roof structure.
It's a use variance. A use variance, I will tell you, is exceedingly difficult to get. It is...
Well, this is a portable piece of...
I'm just telling you, the standards for a use variance are, we rarely, if, if, I can count on one hand the 20, so many years I've been on this board, a use variance in a grid, it's a very difficult thing to do. It's a different application to, that's, 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 so that's why we wanted to get this straight.
Well, there's an apartment there too. It's not just my office.
No, but you're, you're asking for a use variance. It, it sounds like, and again, that's a very different standard. And it's just...
Again, I don't understand. It's a mixed use, but it's actually, as I said, residential, it's not residential. it's not residential. There's an apartment there, and there's my office. Neither one of those is residential.
Just to say, probably in terms of, in terms of getting past the owner occupied criteria, the best place to honestly go is probably more of a change in zoning law, if that's what you're seeking. More, like, it's like a form of a policy from the town board. We can't, the zoning board can interpret the law, they can't change the policy of it. So like I said, we, you can certainly consider a use variance. It's a different standard, and I'll, I can provide what those standards are.
Well, Nick needs to know what the, and it's, it's a totally different application. And again, it is, I can't stress to you how hard it is to get a use variance versus an area variance.
But I got denied for, on two codes, right? Two zoning codes. It didn't say anything about it. I needed a use variance. This didn't say that. Well.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking, is because there's, so you got a denial from the
Right.
from the zoning enforcement officer. You have filled out a form to appeal it, which in which case, what the board would do is they would look at all the facts of the situation, and they would determine, they would be pretty much stepping in the shoes of the zoning enforcement officer, determining if the decision from the zoning enforcement officer should be upheld, should be overturned, or should be modified. That's what an appeal is. You're, you're appealing the decision and saying the wrong decision was made, you're asking for the board to make a decision. A use variance is saying this use is not allowed in my zoning district, and I would like to seek a use variance from those provisions. Um, and there's, I'm just pulling up the standards, because it has been a little while.
Well, this is way over my head. I, 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 let me consult an attorney and, and see, because I, I really don't understand this. I violated or suggested two, two of the codes. No one said anything about a use variance or anything like that.
I would say a use variance is an option you can take. That's what I, that's what I'm
That's the only option I can take, it sounds like.
You can appeal, you can, you can ask for an interpretation, with, in which case the board would look at that zoning law and determine if the, if the zoning enforcement officer, if they agree with his decision, or if they don't.
So this is the right board to go to?
It's, it's the right board if you would like to appeal the decision.
I do, I would like to appeal. This is the right board.
Okay, so you're saying that the, you're, you're appealing the denial of the short-term rental.
Right.
Kim, help me out here. So let's say, with those two violations, let's assume hypothetically that we move through the process and then we approve with the other laws. What would happen next?
If you were to overturn the E O's determination,
Right.
then if that decision would go to the zoning enforcement officer, my guess is that you would have to then issue a short-term rental permit. That's what was denied, and if you're overturning that decision, you're saying that the permit should be issued.
And so, if I'm wrong, like, we just, that whole regulation was just changed, right?
I think a few years ago, right?
Well, I just saw something that we got an email.
I'm not sure when it was.
What, a short-term?
Is short-term rental. Does that apply to this, or no?
Yes.
No, well, that was the village, I thought.
The one that, uh,
I thought it was the town rent, because we got it, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, the town of Rhinebeck has a short-term rental law.
I think they just, they just
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's very, it's very recent now. It just, it's
Much more rigid than the village, like, one in the village.
It, it, it's what we have to deal with. But I, I think it may be worth your while to buy a little time from an attorney just to make a little bit more sense of this, because it is more complex than just the usual situation where you're saying, all right, I want a, an area variance, because the board's gonna do is five feet away from the property line, and it should be ten feet, whatever.
It's not anywhere near any of the property lines. There's nobody
I understand, but what I'm, I'm just giving you an example, is that this, this is
I thought I just heard a scenario where, where you guys could take care of this. Isn't that, did I understand it wrong?
We're, we're still trying to figure out what you want. Do you want an, an interpretation? Do you want us to take a look at the decision of the code enforcement officer and say, is it right or is it wrong? Or are you saying, I want, you know, a relief from this law, and I, I wanna, you know, I know I can't use it based upon the law, but I want a, a use variance, a, a variance from the law, so I can use it the way I want to use it.
That's
Which is a lot harder standard to me than doing the other thing.
Right, I don't want to do the harder one.
Nobody does.
Yeah, I just gave a hypothetical.
I understand, and I, and I, and I thank you for that.
I just don't understand. Were you cited by the?
He has a, he submitted an application for short-term rental.
The only reason why this has come up is because you wanted to make this as legal as possible.
Airbnb is bugging you to get a registration number.
Right.
Well,
And that's why, that's what motivated me to come in, when he told me that they, you get messages and say you gotta have a registration number. This is a brand-new New York state law.
Well, also, in the, in the town, so the town did pass, you have to get a permit from the town for short-term rental. Outside of Airbnb or Verbo or anything, that's how you advertise it, but in the town, you have to get a permit to get a short-term rental. Even though the law is new, the concept in zoning law is that if the use is not listed as permitted use, it's considered prohibited. So even though short-term rentals may have been happening previously, they were under the zoning law prohibited. Now, the town of Rhinebeck has allowed short-term rentals to happen with a permit.
And if I may.
Mr. Staley applied for a permit, and the permit was denied because the RV and the owner occupied it.
And if I may, in that email, my email response on that thread, I brought up this very issue of what is going to happen, and, uh, and this is going to start, and this is exactly what we're gonna deal with. I think Mr. Tan has maybe six or ten applications in files so far. And, uh, and so we're at the deal with this. And then we have individuals like this gentleman who is just trying to follow new rules or the new regulations or laws, and may have been doing this prior, right?
Right, but the law
Now it's changed.
The law has changed, and we have to deal with the law and
There's not grandfathered, which is, I don't understand. I have reservations for the sheep and wolf, the Duchess County Fair, all the events.
And they don't grandfather.
Airbnb has taken money from those people. It's gotta be all refunded. I mean, this is, I can see not blocking them, new ones, but to put one out of business, I mean, that's, I don't get it. And, and we need short-term rentals. They're beneficial to a tourist town, right? I think so.
Well, and that's why the town has allowed them now. They're just regulations, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking, we'll be looking at the regulations.
Well, it seems like the regulations are really strict, that you really don't want them. That's what it seems to me.
No, there's different points of view on that.
I think, if Kim or maybe Gretchen could just clarify, in the town's new ruling on short-term rentals, you can do it if you're, if it's on your primary residence property, or if you're
I believe so. I, I, that's another one. I haven't
If you're in residence.
Yeah. I have to look at the
And which is why you were saying, I'm not in residence, but I'm there all the time.
Right, but it says, and this is the section, it says, it's a must-be owner's primary residence. And during the term of the short-term rental, the property must be owner occupied. Those are the, the real
And there's, there's two knocks on short-term rentals, and I agree with both of them. It takes existing housing away from people, like Lake George, who are forty percent owner Airbnbs. That's disgusting on a real. By the way, I sold a Stanford White Terrace house a long time ago. The second one is, you can disturb the neighbors in high-density areas. That's why they want the owner or representative there. Neither one of those apply to my application. It's not taking any housing away. There's nobody in, even the gentleman there, he would never know what's going on, on that, my property there, inside that Cloverleaf. There's no neighbors. And yet, they want to shut me down. It's beneficial for the community. It's not doing any of the bad things that short-term rentals do, and you guys got a law here that isn't working, in my opinion, for the benefit of the town.
Well, we're, we're gonna have these situations where the, the law may work for ninety percent of the time, but may not work for
That's why, and I know you want to have more of a deal.
And, and I know your property intimately, so it
I know you do. I know you, Scott.
Oh, is that a threat?
He knows why I'm talking to him.
He knows why I'm talking to him. No, no, Nick and I don't.
We go back, boys. We go back, boys.
Change your primary residence.
Well, I don't know.
All right.
One more question, just while we're talking about it.
What are we gonna do with that, I guess, the thing?
Well, I guess we'll, we'll take it as an interpretation.
Okay, let's take it as an interpretation.
Because you're, you're appealing the denial of the short-term rental.
Thank you.
So that's the case.
No, no, I'm gonna take it. I'm just trying to take it.
It was a matter of, is this a variance, a use variance on interpretations? I think, I think it, you know, it makes sense to be an interpretation. And I think that's
I, I agree with it. Let's take it as an interpretation.
So we'll take it to the next step.
So there was a, um, this, how long has this RV been on the property?
Well, it's been on three years, but I, I didn't use it for the first year. I don't remember why COVID was quite ready, but the last two years. I will tell you the flow. Last year, I had fifty-five nights. This is not devastating. There was all mostly weekends. It was all mostly the big events where we need the extra space, and, and it's really not comfortable for a lot of people that have never camped before, but they all loved it. They loved the campfire, they loved the stream. Uh, it's, it's a great spot.
It's on a slab?
It's on a pad, yes.
So that was when, there was, in the file, there is a
I tried, I didn't know I needed a building permit to put a pad down. I did, all the hookups were there already. I just decided to put a pad down and
Did you get the building permit?
No, he wouldn't get it. I tried to get it, he wouldn't take it. Mike, Mike signed it in for, for the slab, which, like I said, I wasn't building anything. I didn't know I needed a building permit. And I went to Mike and I said, I came in, I want to apply for a building permit, pay the fee, and he said, nope, they're gonna have a law anyway. That's what he said.
They're gonna have what?
They're gonna have a law anyway. And I think he was talking about the state, which he knew was coming.
So he just did it.
But again, my argument is, right or wrong, this is beneficial for the town of Rhinebeck. It provides a service that we need, and if you got a law that doesn't work, I just was scrolling on the web last night, and they're renting four bunk bed ice houses on lakes for two twenty-nine a night. They're called six-holes. You can fish down six holes. They got heat, cook, cooking, and, and, and you, two hundred and thirty dollars a night on a lake. And they put a dozen of them out in the middle of the lake. So my son said, let's put one on Lake Sappasco. I said, huh.
Get another application.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
I, I think we have enough. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the application.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Nick, thanks. We'll be, we'll be put on for hearing on, um, the nineteenth of March, if I recall correctly.
I'll be there.
Okay.
And maybe you'll be an attorney.
Never a bad idea. Tell me from another
Yeah, right. I can see it. All right, good night, everybody.
Half my bedtime.
All right. So, uh, next is
So, uh, seeker, it will be
Oh, that's right.
So if it is an interpretation
It's the same thing as the first one.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a type-two under C six seventeen point five, C thirty-seven. I think the interpretation makes sense. He is really appealing the denial, and also if he, if, you know, if the, if interpretation is not to his liking, he could then seek a use variance.
Yeah.
Or go again with the town board, your policy has changed. All right, and anybody want to be point contact person for this one?
All right, seeker. So fight over it.
You can have a joke.
Did we do a motion on the seeker?
Yes, a motion that it's a type-two under six seventeen blah, 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 blah.
Five C thirty-seven.
Uh, what's her name down at the end?
I can't second that.
That's warrior talk.
No, she's flying the section, because I'm so incompetent.
So there's been a motion, and we need a second.
Yeah, I thought we had a second. I second, yeah.
That was to accept the application, but, okay.
Anyway.
I'm jelly.
All right, um, next is Hudson Valley, who's Rhinebeck Rockledge. Mr. Kemp.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Sean Kemp. I represent the applicant.
Is there anybody here for, uh, this, by the way, I'm gonna make a motion that we open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor?
I have a second.
All right, so the public hearing is open. Uh, is there anybody here for this application? All right, great. Um, what happens here in the, um, public hearing is that the applicant gets to say what they want to do. They've already, they've known this application for some time. They'll explain it some more, and then you have an opportunity to come on up, uh, state your name, address, questions, concerns, what have you. Take it away.
I'm just gonna freeze this. I think Kyle left it.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's a little disparity there.
Good evening. My name's Sean Kemp. I represent the applicant. Excuse me. Uh, on this area variance, area variance application, this involves the Rockledge property on Ackert Hook Road. Um, as Mr. Vermin noted, this application's been around for quite some time now. Um, some recent developments, uh, as you know, last night, the planning board uh, issued a negative declaration in connection with seeker process, which is a very good thing for the project, obviously. Um, and what we have here tonight, uh, with respect to the area variance request, is, um, the property is a hundred and thirty-six acres, and what the applicant is proposing is a three-lot subdivision, two five-lot, um, parcels, and then the balance is gonna be a hundred and twenty-six, uh, acre parcel. It's not part of the application tonight. On the two five-lot parcels, one parcel is gonna contain the manor house, which is a quite significant structure, and the other parcel is gonna contain, um, the stone barn, okay? Um, and what the applicant's proposing is an adaptive reuse, and the town code incentivizes adaptive reuses, and, and in order to do so, they, uh, code provides for an increase in density, so that a parcel that, um, has an adaptive reuse can have up to four units in each structure that's located on, uh, the property. What we have here, though, is, um, we have two, two big buildings, uh, the manor house and the stone barn. The manor house, though, is significantly larger than the stone barn. And what we would like to do is take, um, the, instead of having four units in each of them, take two units from the stone barn and have them put into the manor house, so that there'd be six units in the manor house, and there'd be two units in the stone barn. There's no, uh, increase in the overall density, um, but the allocation seems to make sense, because the stone barn, uh, if you were to use, um, four units in, in that structure, you would have to do renovations and construction, um, that would disturb the site, and, um, during the course of the, the planning board, uh, process, early on, there were some concerns about, um, that the stone barn being closer to Ackert, Ackert Hook Road, uh, and with the construction, it would make it larger and be more visible. Um, with respect to the manor house, um, it's a three-story structure plus a basement. It can more than accommodate six units, as opposed to the stone barn, which is, I believe, two floors on a slab. Um, and I think roughly, I don't have this, the internal square footage, but just like the, the, um, kind of the perimeter of the buildings. The manor house is seventy-five hundred square feet, and the stone barn's approximately five thousand square feet. But again, like I said, the manor house is three floors, stone barn's, uh, two, and the manor house also has the basement. So essentially, what we're asking for, it seems to be somewhat of a common sense request, is that neither building will have to be disturbed, um, but we're just simply asking that we take the balance of one, uh, from the stone barn, the two units, and move them over to the manor and move them over to the manor house, which is much more capable of accommodating six units.
And the footprints of the building stay the same?
That's correct.
And this is the same thing, the same plan that came to us many years ago?
Many years ago. Kemp and I discussed, I think it was.
2019?
March 2019.
Because I actually remember doing the site inspection on that 1,000 years ago. Even that.
Well, maybe you could do the site inspection again.
I might just do that.
How it hasn't changed.
See, I haven't made for it. Not that I don't press it.
There's been no progress.
Yes.
Just looking to see if you have any elevation. I think this is the.
Yeah, so these are the plans that were submitted by Scott Lutton. This is the manor house that's being picked up here. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, there's the stone barn, and you can see that the size differences are quite obvious.
Oh, this is the stone barn?
Yes.
So we're thinking of taking two units out of the barn and put it in the manor house.
That's correct.
Six to two.
Six to two. Well, we're going from four to two on one, and then.
Four to six.
Four to six on it.
Right. The manor house is beautiful. That's huge.
I think this is the, is this the stone barn?
This is the stone barn. And then up top was the manor. I mean, it's quite an impressive structure. And this does contain, this set of plans does contain some of the internal layouts.
Yeah.
So you can see how it's really out.
I would just.
This is Matthew Rudicoff.
My business is environmental planner. Matthew Rudicoff from the stock. I've been environmental planner on the projects since the beginning. Just a couple of points that Shawn didn't mention is that the two slushes are on the National Register of Historic Places, and the applicant is going, been under review by the National Park Service, the Department of Interior, and have gotten approvals for the integrity of the adaptive reuse for the historic purposes. And then with regard to the planning board's negative declaration, this was a coordinated secret review. And so the ZBA was an involved agency after that review. So with the planning board's adoption of a negative declaration, that completes your secret review covering variants for the ZBA.
And that's what we were waiting for for a long time, because we were waiting to take it a long time.
Yeah.
We just couldn't go forward until we had the.
Thank you, ma'am.
Could I just also say something?
Sure, absolutely. Come on up and state your name and.
Charlotte White, from Hudson Valley. Just want to say that manor house is about 22,000 square feet interior-wise, which would make it too big for you, in terms of like what I think the market would take. And the other stone barn is only one and a half stories high. Because it's only, it's one story, you have lots of them. So it's like 5,000 square feet. So that's really the discrepancy between two of those. And really, the only way we've done the stone barn would have been to make an addition in the back, which we probably could have gotten approval for landmarks, but this keeps the integrity of the historic buildings that really are, keep it preserved.
Any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions at this point in time, but I think we have.
Public comment.
The public comment.
Very good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I do have one. Is there any affordable housing product that's developed?
I don't believe so, no. Boy, are you laughing.
I don't know, 2 million is affordable in my mind these days? No, in all fairness, I believe they opted to take instead of having to ask, so that's all fine.
If you could just state your name, address, et cetera, and then.
So I'm Cara Kewell. I am at 467 Akron Hook Road, an adjacent property to this project, and I've been following this for the better for 10 years. So thank you very much for allowing us here today. As they mentioned, last night they got a negative declaration for secret. Congratulations. While we're disagreeing on that, we actually support the request for this variance. It makes complete sense to transfer the density to the mansion from the stone barn. I would like to say that the way it's worded in the announcement of this meeting, it sounds, it doesn't make it clear that they're transferring those units from the stone barn to the mansion. So we want to be clear that this is not, because you can also request additional units in an adaptive reuse project beyond the four and be granted permission to that. So we want to be very clear, this is not six in the mansion.
And then four.
And then four.
And that's why I asked the question, is this the same application we saw many years ago?
Yes, exactly. So I've seen it mostly worded the way we're just discussing it, but it's not clear from.
We'll make sure in the resolution.
Okay.
So just explain the project as it's been.
Okay.
I thought it was pretty clear, wasn't it?
It doesn't mention the transfer. It just mentions the request. It just mentions the request for six units in the mansion. So in addition to that, because the mansion and the stone barn are both on separate five-acre parcels, we would like it noted that if the stone barn is sold in the future, before the adaptive reuse process, that it be held at a maximum of two residential units because that density has already been transferred to the other, to the other building. So if somebody comes along and says, this is a great old building, I want to do adaptive reuse project, I want to put four units in it, then that's not possible. And I think that was the main point. I will say personally, if you wanted to put more than six units in the mansion and do less new build, that would be good. And then I just also wanted to be clear that the aesthetic considerations for Akron Hook Road are not really a factor from our standpoint in that it's, I'm sure whatever is built will be tasteful. There's already two very nondescript modern buildings either side of it. So this is.
And just as part of our, for the plate in the resolution, we say that it must be built in four units in place. And that's another thing that we put in our resolution to make sure that the application that's proposed, it's built the same exact way as the application was.
Absolutely, but if the, if the, I'm sure if this project goes ahead as exactly as planned, that they will put the two units in the stone barn and the six units in the other. If however, the stone barn is sold as a separate five-acre lot at some point, I would like any future owner of that property to be held at a maximum of two residential units because we already have major concerns about the density of the overall project, and we don't want that to happen in the future.
Just a quick question. How many units are there in total? I think, I kind of remember somewhere in the seventies, but is it going down into the twenties or?
Thirty-six. Twenty-eight and eight.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
This is gonna be a homeowners association with an offering plan. Which should, if that's something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to be here on this application? How about you people? Who'd like to be here on this application?
Well, you know, I want to revisit the affordable housing. And the reason I do is because, incorrectly if I'm wrong, doesn't the town of Rhinebeck have? I mean, there is a housing crisis up here, and there are initiatives for affordable housing.
There's actually affordable housing, workforce housing going forward at the time, or in the town board right now.
And so is there a requirement with new developments to have that component?
No.
No, there's not.
That's beyond our scope, I mean, we're not saying it's going to be up. Does this make sense, rearranging the number of units? Distinct.
Well, I'm not suggesting rearranging or changing the number. It is 36. But I don't, and I just don't know. I think, or I just. Is there a component where you have percentage?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Do you happen to be from New Jersey?
I do not happen to be from New Jersey.
That's a common, that's a common requirement in some New Jersey municipalities.
He's from New Jersey.
Yeah.
That explains a lot.
It does explain a lot. But it is, it's a common requirement in a lot of municipalities in New Jersey that they have that built in. I'm not aware of that in the town of Rhinebeck.
Yeah, they don't do that in Chicago, so. Anyway. We would, we'd like, I think we'd like, I think Catherine and I, Catherine and I are really going to do the site visit. And the rest of the gang is new, so we'd like to do a site visit.
I've been there before.
Okay, all right. You two, I assume, you should go out. It's.
Not here. Not here.
Yeah.
You know, I lived there for 10 years. No, I'm just kidding. Well, we're gonna have a site visit.
Yes, so we'll have a site visit. We'll go out there. Yeah.
I just have one question. I think it's for Kemp, but I'm not sure. On the adaptive reuse and how many units there are, and I just wanted to throw to this one as a question. Wouldn't that be contained in the resolution?
So we'll.
I mean, I remember we've done other resolutions in the past where we said that variance is code with the property, not the first one.
Yeah, so I mean, we certainly won't be describing the project that way. My, I mean, we can always ask. My concern, I will look into that question. My concern is that you can put conditions on variances as long as, but there has to be reasonably related, and you can't be controlling the operation of the business. If four units are permitted as a price, I don't know if limiting it to two could potentially be drifting into that, you know, controlling the operation of the business. I'd have to look into that, if that's something that you are interested in.
Well, it's just, but if you're trading two, to go over to this.
Just that aside, it would be impossible to put four units to that building, more of a building, just the way it's laid out. Very odd building. You couldn't put four units.
I mean, you know, I will say, you know, yeah, and, you know, in terms of the various application process, you know, there are the five factors. Do you think that the trade-off of two to, you know, dropping it down to four to might be relevant to those factors? That is something, I wouldn't know if it would be a condition per se, but we could always certainly grab that as a reason.
Okay.
No, I have no problem.
Clarify that.
Yeah, adding that is not a problem at all.
To keep it at two?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just double check just to make sure.
And, you know, if it doesn't survive, screw me down the road. We did the best we could.
Okay.
I've had a court tell me I'm on the fly.
As a product.
As a view, we pass, and we find out together. Any other?
So Charlie, for the, for the two units, you said that that's pretty much how it has to be anyway.
Yeah, it's a very odd building, in fact, H. It looks like a barn.
Chapel.
It's a barn. It's the stone barn.
They call it a barn.
With horses.
So it's like, it's very odd.
Yeah, well, it's a barn. We think of it as chapels. You said barn.
No, because some people call it a shop.
Right, because he said barn, I was thinking of the one.
Behind.
Back.
Any more comments, concerns, perhaps? All right, then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I have no idea who was lead on this, but.
I think it was Pittsburgh. And then it's on that next one.
Uh, I guess that means you're back to the May Day, that's all right. Or actually, you know what? There you are. You used to live there.
Yeah, I know it really well.
You know it really well.
I'll be the lead.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
I have a stash, I carry it.
When we, when we.
Uh, well, the way, because we closed the public hearing, we have 62 days to give you a resolution. However, if you don't wait 62 days, we do it at the next meeting. So it'll be the next meeting, I think.
So the site visit between now.
Yes, exactly, yeah, we'll go out there again.
So somebody will.
Yeah, we'll coordinate it.
Yeah, but you have a resolution by the 19th of March.
Thank you.
You don't have to be here unless you have nothing better to do. I have a killing.
No, I just want to be there for the site visit.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will start, can I get some of your initial impressions? I know that we have gotten them before, but, you know, just like to start.
It's fine. It's fine. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. I remember distinctly because I'm such a unique. Thank you very much. A piece of property, and the structures are magnificent. It's a wonderful place.
She has a question.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but yes, when you have second half, unrelated question to anything we've been talking about.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Can you? Okay.
How, how does one go about amending the code?
Go to the town board.
Yeah.
The town board.
Right.
Okay, and is there like a stated procedure, or are you just like, how?
No, I think there should be something online. I think, well, that's for zoning change, I suppose.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Talk to the town board, don't let any joke.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right in that office right there.
It's a long process.
It's a long process. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we just have.
So does any, I just, I want to just.
Oh, no, I said yes, and.
Yeah.
The rest was.
Why don't you bring the issues with the whole subject? 36 units.
For other, for other reasons, the density of the other buildings and everything else, I think as far as this, there's not a problem because it makes sense and it's.
No, this has been fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. A lot of the. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. We get lonely here sometimes.
Well, you're a delightful group.
I guess my first. About meetings, it doesn't have a place.
You know, the last time, we only had it a couple of times, and I didn't ask for it.
But we went to Clinton, and they had nannies too. I was like, is this a, is this a time?
We don't, we don't do that, and, and we haven't had it in any. We didn't need it, I mean.
You are very civilized.
Everybody was very civilized because they give the speech, and I probably went correctly.
I will say to Brian's point, though, there is a requirement for affordable housing, but you can pay in lieu of that, and I believe that is what they have all had to do, at least initially, but they propose it. It's 10%, so I think.
I think there's a project happening in Rhinebeck.
Oh, for sure. Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, that, if you redo up the charter, I think they have to have a couple of affordable.
Yeah, that's.
We're talking about a village.
It's there, but you can pay.
Yeah, so village, a concentration of housing, so that vacant lot used with.
School.
Yeah, probably, yes. But that's village, not town. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Take care.
So.
Because I, I want to.
Yeah, was Joe saying something at the end of Joe?
Joe, your thoughts? I mean, I know you haven't been out for the site visit, but.
No, I.
I said this right in the chat.
Yeah, so I remember. I mean, I think it's.
Okay.
And regarding the request of keeping it the stone barn as two, do you think that that's a benefit for?
I think it's a benefit, and, you know, that's before us, and that's what we're voting on. And whether it passes muster in 20 years when somebody else looks at it.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that, so with the area variance, what you're really looking, you're looking through all those five factor tests, and one of them is going to be character of the neighborhood. If the variance is substantial, you know, if, if there's another way of doing this, so, you know, if, if you believe that the purpose of transferring it is actually going to that variance, that it's wrapped up in that way.
Yeah.
As opposed to just making sure that it's not just, you know, making. As opposed to just making sure that it's not just, you know, making sure how they run the business. But I think it is, you know, it's an adaptive reuse.
It's an adaptive reuse and they're unique buildings and they should stay presented to us.
By the way, I just.
We have to move on, Brian, so.
Just one more important one. They said that you can, you kind of fly and get more than the four, four unit.
Well, I guess, so I think what she, what the comment was saying is that, you know, you can see an area, is it an area variance? Is a variance from what, a dimension, physical dimension requirement in the board, in the zoning law? So conceivably, if you're limited to four, just as with, with accessory structure square footage, you're limited to fifteen hundred, but you can seek a variance asking more. So I think what the concern was is that if you're just asking for two additional units in the manor house, what could keep four, but that's not really what this project is proposing. It's just proposing a trade off between them, but because four is limited, that's what the variance is for. But they're not seeking, they're not seeking a total of four and six.
Not bad, I understand, but I'm just wondering in the future.
So much of this variance is just that, just.
Just, just.
It's like a no brainer.
Yep.
But the sizes of those buildings, oh, yeah.
Well, it's been at the planning board. That's really what, that's what the, and what the planning board has been working on recently has been the seeker. You know, there's been a lot of comments on this, there's been a lot of studies done in terms of, you know, there's been, one of the reasons in 2020 that it was postponed was because of the drill, you know, seeing the well watered drill and test protecting, testing that. And then there's the wastewater treatment plant. There's been traffic concerns for it, so there's been a lot of review done.
Okay, you ready to go to old business?
Yeah.
All right, so the first case is.
So let me ask you, Kevin, I think you guys are Bach and Schickler, correct?
Yeah, I was going to say, can I read it first?
Yeah.
Okay, I am reading the resolution, so you're number two, so skip the first one. Is that okay?
He just became number one.
He just, yes, he just moved up because of attendance and a star. We ready to roll, Kim?
Yeah, just one second, I'm going to get my time down.
Yeah, I assume these were posted.
Yeah, these are all posted. Circulated these resolutions, so these resolutions based on your last meeting were drafted to approve the resolution. The only thing, I, so I did circulate this to the board over the weekend and they have been posted on Tuesday because Monday was a holiday. We only change two things. One, Gretchen, do you have the date that we referred it to plan?
That's what I'll do.
Okay. And then I did change, Brian, you weren't on the site visit, right?
Correct.
All right, so I just took your name on the site visit. And then once we get Gretchen's date, we'll put that in. But otherwise, if you have no more comments on that, you can just read the, now therefore be resolved.
I can certainly do that, now therefore be resolved. This is actually the, before I get going here, the resolution of the town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Portia Bach and Greg Schickler, ZB A case number ten sixty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, one more thing. We did receive another letter.
Yeah.
That was in support and I just make reference to that in the public comment period.
Yeah, we discussed that and I thought it was important that we get all the comments in. All right, therefore be resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZB A hereby grants the variances requested by the applicants, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. The location of these accessory structures of the property makes sense. The proposed structures are in keeping with the house and the neighborhood. Given they are one story and a modest size, the neighbor directly across the street, eight orders, is there an S? Directly across the street have provided a letter of support and raised no objection. The view from the neighborhood to the north by room three oh eight is blocked by vegetation. The view from any other neighborhood will be minimal or seen at all. The new structures avoid the wetlands on the property. Section two, the granting of these variances are expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted, subject to any additional conditions and requirements from the planning board during their review. Section three, the granting of these variances shall be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town and linebacker any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid or pulled by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and approvals. And five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. So coming inside, to me it made sense. We went out there and we, it was fine. See any issues and we did get two letters of support, which is, or emails of support, which is nice. And let's say the rest of the game.
Before we move, do you want to get a date?
Twelve twenty-three.
Was it?
Twelve twenty-three.
Twelve twenty-three.
Another discussion.
No, situated perfectly.
Yeah, I get it.
Especially if it did not bother the neighbor across the street.
Yeah, okay, so I make a motion that we approve the resolution as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, excuse me? Roll call, excuse me.
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I'm Joe.
Brian?
Yes.
Wonderful, all right, next.
ZB A case number one zero six seven, yes.
Great question.
Applicants, the applicant is Ben Floyd. The applicant is represented for the board by Joseph Matt Carmy of McCarmy Contracting.
Bless you.
And Mark Praminsky, P D, yada yada. Now therefore be resolved based on how the facts described above upon reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZB A hereby grants the variances requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment of the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The proposed location of the pool and pool house is not open in the most grassy lawn area that is to the side of the adjacent home, set back well off the cul-de-sac and a moderate distance from the nearest existing residence. Its located, location avoids the wetlands, unfoot wetlands, buffer area, existing subsurface wastewater disposal area and existing well. The size and structure of the pool house fits well with the size and structure of the existing house on the property. Several neighbors from around the neighborhood provided letters of support, noting that the proposed structure complement the existing architecture and landscape and will be seen as an enhancement to the neighborhood. Section two, the granting of this variance expressly is expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Section three, the granting of the variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article fourteen, free, fee reimbursements of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Variants shall not be deemed, be deemed granted until such fees are paid or pulled by the applicant. And section four, the granting of the variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. And section five, the area variance shall be null and void unless proposed construction is commenced within one year of resolution.
And before we go, just want to just put in that date. Was that the same date, right?
Same date.
December twenty-third, right?
Any comments, concerns? Yeah, I thought it was fine. Okay, would you like to, would you like to make a motion that the resolution is read?
Yes, please.
Well, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, my word, that's the second time around. It's just, it's terrible. It's throwing me off.
You already mentioned the time.
How many years have you been doing this?
Uh, well, I'm not, you know, I'm just older. Anyway.
Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
End, last but not least, the end of an era.
Resolution of the town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance application in Austin, ZB A case number ten sixty-nine. The applicant is in the, in the Austin, referred to her, there's the applicant and the parcel is at ninety-four Slick Quarry Road. I'll go to the resolution. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZB A hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment of health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The proposed additions are modest in size and reasonable for the purpose of expanding the home to accommodate the population. The existing layout of the property and vegetation will secure most, if not all, of the views of South Cory Road. No objections were raised by the neighborhood whom, that, whom they shared the drive where the applicant would be most impacted. Section two, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted with the following exceptions. A, colored house. The applicant has provided bringery showing the addition to be white. The applicant explained that they are still considering the color scheme. They considered white to be the most visible of color schemes, so provided it as a worst case scenario in terms of visual impact. As the house and its additions will not be visible from Slick Quarry Road, the color of the addition may be adjusted at a later date. The applicant should be considerate of the surrounding residential area and may want to consider a darker or earth tone color or neutral color. B, layout of the bedrooms. The applicant also noted that the interior layout of the additional bedrooms may be adjusted or rearranged based on further considerations. The applicant is permitted to adjust the interior layout of the bedrooms prior to receiving a building permit and certificate of occupancy so long as the layout does not impact the exterior design of the addition. Section three, the granting of the variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid or pulled by the applicant. Section four, the granting of the variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and approvals. Section five, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this. I would have one additional little clause that I would add in. It's probably contained in this, but on the bedrooms, we've probably covered it, but say the layout does not impact the exterior design or footprint of the addition.
Sure, yeah.
Let's see what I would add to this. Any other comments for me, guys?
Yes, we're going to listen. It was, it's a disheated application and made a whole lot of sense and.
I think the, the impact visually on the neighborhood would be really minimal.
I think it might be improved.
You know, yes, and because the way the house faces the driveway and those two little portions coming out, the outside perimeter of it really isn't changed as far as the view. I think, I think we'll be, or in a solution.
So before the vote, so Gretchen, same, same date, right?
Same date, uh-huh.
Do you have the date of the application? The one I have isn't dated, but I remember you said that you had one of the date. You don't have to give it to me now, but.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, just email or I can just leave, give it to you in Word tomorrow and you can just insert that.
So I make a motion that we accept the resolution with the minimal changes that were discussed.
Second. Gretchen?
All right. Scott?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, congratulations for a job of all honesty. No, we were fantastic, so. And also fantastic is Steve, which are. Congratulations, of course. Thank God for.
Oh, you weren't.
You'll miss us. I, I know you're going to be in the audience, or you know. You'll be in the audience because you can't, you won't be on stage anyway. Oh, really? Okay, that'll be good.
So I would.
I think you're going to be begging to be on the board.
Oh, you didn't adjourn.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
You didn't adjourn.
You know that.
You know, motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn, so.
Sure.
We just don't want Catherine to leave yet, so they're forever.
That's right.
It's no good, David.
Thank you.